Be missing in time is can you take this through me review connected.
This Mr. Mayor, this evening we have the approval of council minutes for September fifteenth. There are three proclamations this evening. Uh two ordinances on for a second reading by title. We have three ordinances on for first reading by title. We have twelve resolutions, one matter correspondent. Payment bill tolling seven million one hundred sixty thousand two hundred fifty four dollars and seventy seven. We have eight executive sessions I end however, we have the addition of one more title litigation regarding Mary Beth. Hadry and we conclude the council reports and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
You counsel comments on it.
Mayor, I just want to mention real quick. Ordinance twenty thirty that's going to be adopted tonight is also associated with resolution twenty five three three four. And that's going to be the paving uh over at Monument Park. All the work Mr. Patty and um. Man over at uh Department of Public Works been doing. And today we received another donation in addition to the Elks. Uh Mr. McConville dropped off a donation from the American Legion, I think the Sons of the Legion and VFW. Uh so that will be adding a battlefield uh cross, I think it's called Monument to uh to the park. And I want to obviously thank all them for that. Uh twenty three seventy three, everyone can see the work that's taking place over at. Uh the senior center that work has been related to this uh to this ordinance. That work was under uh a former grant for recreation and twenty three seventy three has to do with the community development block grant. Uh for some of the work that's going to take place inside the senior center. And uh resolution three twenty nine is for the best practices. Once again, it the borough was required to to have at least uh. A a score of thirty two and I think we're actually at thirty six and a half, which is one of our higher scores. Uh and that just goes through a whole bunch of different items that the the state test. In regards to uh if the town is doing it, you know, putting years of, you know, information on our on our website and things of that nature. And um and that's it.
And the council, do we need to vote on amending the executive session before we vote on? We did. I had a motion to add one item of litigation to effective session. Resolution twenty five history three nine motion by Councilman Smith. Second, again, like Council President White on. And the twenty five three thirty nine is amended. It's just by opening up for public comments, anyone would like to address the mayor and council regarding any matters, including those on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and address for the clerk.
Eric, counsel women, I I'm here simply as the attorney for Traditions Convention Association located on Coppola Drive. We're just here because the ordinance that was adopted twenty three sixty six, I'm hoping you could either amend it or addressing, I understand you're going to be revising your master plan. Because the ordinance says specifically it's addressing the it's trying to rezone Hadley. Uh office park to make it consistent with the surrounding area, but the only thing is it didn't include the presidential units that are putting up against it. So we're hoping that you can amend it or see it. Make some changes to your master plan to include such things as lighting landscaping firms. And other items that factor in that residential.
Yeah, so. I I think it can be addressed as in the master plan, but also if something were to come in front of the planning board. That would probably be the area where we would request all those items when we actually had a case.
We're right to the clerk if we can get a copy of the. Applications only because. I don't tell them it would just be the homers that were affected.
Okay.
Really appreciate it, man.
No, no issue here.
Thank you, man.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Or one. You know, one forty seven. I'm here because I want to give an update on an incident about about a month and a half ago when we had the loud music playing. Um after that, about a week later, I was approached by the woman who lives in that house. And she wanted to let me know that I was told, she was told that the police said, I keep calling the police on them. Letting me know that they are gonna play loud music and then there even if I go to the police, they're not gonna lower it. And then I said to her, well, they need to play it that loud and she said, yes. And then I informed her about the old woman that was behind her and said, well, what about Miss Jones? And that she went locked in her house because it was so loud and she said she'd never call the police unless she's our friend and I said, well, I'm not. He was, I said, I was with her. And again, she just, she just wanted me to know that we're not lowering the music. But the thing is, again, it happened again with another house. On the other side, same thing, I by eight thirty, we had enough. Call and I have to admit, I will call because I don't think it's fair. I know most of the people in the neighborhood will not call, they're afraid of what happens, like repercussion, somebody says, we did it and then somebody's gonna come and maybe be convicted. I've had it happen, but I want to do what's right and the right thing is, if I have to do it for other people, I'll do it, even if I get, I get flack, I do, I know I do. But it's wrong and then they did the same thing, would not lower the music and it went on just ten o'clock. And then this Saturday again, that's my concern is that this is an ongoing thing, it's not ones a year or one. This is almost every weekend. And to them to say to the police or I don't know what happened in the interaction when we show up, but that we're gonna lower it, they don't. Or they make it loud or whatever, this this has got to stop, this is insane. And I have to say, this last one, I actually got set up and went and talked to the person myself, which is probably not the best thing to do, but. I just explained and asked them really kind of, look, I know you have a DJ event, could you just lower it? That person was kind enough and said, yeah, we will, it's decent, it's really decent. So I just wanted to get that update, so plus it's like that I I always tell people that they give your name, so I don't. That's why most people will say they want me to call because they're afraid to call. And so I just don't want that to be the case, that if we were putting up with things that they shouldn't have to, and if there's. The woman says you're not allowed, so why did I can't, I don't get that, that they can say to the police, we're not. Well, I wanted to get a ticket then, I get annoyed with that because I come from a family that's military police and all that. That was really different, you just didn't do that, you didn't show that kind of disrespect, but.
Yeah, I don't know if that's what they're like, if that's their response to the police or in chief, maybe you.
We generally don't encounter people that say they won't lower the music, perhaps they turn it back up half hour after we leave, but then call again.
Yeah. But this I said, it never got lowered and that person refused, that other person had two fourteen Carlisle. It refused and that's and she confronted me to say, we're not doing it, you're not gonna make us lower the music. I'm not making you lower the music, I said, don't you want to be decent to the neighbors, she drove away after that, she didn't want to hear anything, so.
Paul, I knew you looked into. Our ordinance versus others, it's pretty consistent with other towns, right?
I told you, we've modeled, we've modeled ours on what the uh. The EP is actually recommended, um so I didn't see much that we could change.
Unless that that's all, like I have a friend who does music. He said that he has has a map on his phone even that will say it's that six five it is, he's saying that's nothing more than a backyard. Or these are DJs, these are like, this is amplified music, this isn't just somebody playing a radio or whatever. This is absolute and and when ten o'clock, that's late to have somebody playing that and it's like a, it's the base too, you're in your house. I mean, we can't barricade ourselves in our homes, like you want to open the windows and it's like, what you hear is. And that's and it's not just me, but nobody's, people are afraid.
And for lack of a better word, but the sampling of what that actual disciple level is is complicated. It's complicated and it requires specialized equipment. Um you know, to to upheld and up the upheld in court.
Yeah.
But that's all before ten, right? After ten fifteen or?
No, that the sound level is after ten.
Oh, that's.
It probably have to be a close.
My yard from where these people, you would get that, I'm I'm telling you.
General contact. Oh, that comes out.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, if you have contact with the county and have them come out and do the readings. Yes.
Oh, no, I I didn't, I I thought that.
She's gonna call the police, I don't think she's gonna call the county.
It's something we can address for sure.
But and is it the actual neighbors or is it something that? They're renting out their backyard or something like.
It's either like like last one was like like a twenty year old.
Okay. But it's the actual homeowners that doing, they're not renting out because I've heard of things where they're renting out backyards or pools or.
No, not that.
Weird things.
And they're all in with DJs and and yelling, yeah.
Okay.
We have to be concerned that these people drive home.
Uh it's a whole another law.
I'll be in touch with you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, also, my name is Madison Majors, I live at sixty five Way Call Street. Um and I saw that in regulation twenty five three two seven, it talks about use of special equipment and I what, so what?
She's.
Oh, yeah, so I could speak to that, that's a the MOU Middle Six County. Um sometimes it's camera trailers or light stanchions. Um depending, it's it's a multitude of things depending on what emergency may arise or what we may need for a pre-planned event, you know, such as that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hey, same then post public. Can I get a motion for the approval of council minister September fifteenth, the regular and executive session, so. Motion by Council President White, saying by Councilman Smith, Ms. Antoni, can you call the roll?
Yes, Councilman Ben Javanga. I'm a Puffini, Councilwoman. I'm so woman, I'm sorry, councilman. Councilman. And Council President White. That's a six year old.
Thank you. We have three proclamations, first one is for bully bullying prevention month. Where bullying prevention month is a vital opportunity to raise awareness about bullying, promote positive social emotional learning and foster a culture of kindness and respect. Whereas bullying is is a pervasive issue that affects individuals of all ages and backgrounds. Causing physical, emotional and psychological harm, whereas bullying can manifest in various forms, including physical, verbal, social. And cyberbullying, it can have long lasting negative impacts on victims, bystanders and even perpetrators. And whereas bullying can be physical, verbal, sexual or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people. Which often targets race, religion, ethnicity, gender or persons with disabilities. Whereas targeted bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional or learning problems than those who are not bullied. Where the Borough South Plainfield is committed to creating a safe and supportive environment for all residents where everyone feels valued and respected. Now therefore, I'm actually finishing the Borough South Plainfield to hereby proclaim and support the month of October as bullying prevention month. And encourage all citizens of the Borough South Plainfield to promote kindness for everyone. Do we have anybody accepting the proclamation for tonight? Come on up. Domestic violence.
That domestic violence.
Domestic violence, isn't it? Yeah. I was wondering.
Always be all the time. But now. It travels now.
Yeah, bullying. Turns and wires and everything. I'll leave you to hold it together. I have some of that. The names are National Bullying Prevention Center. First of all, it says T-shirt for you and I are now. And they're actually going to be sending more T-shirts that hopefully be worn on. Why is the October twenty second, which is you and I, because I guess. The woman that I've been working with, her name is Dana Mervis, she's an associate of the National Bullying Prevention Center. I also have some information here on council and the administration of. And I have some flyers and some stickers and a whole bunch of stuff if you guys want to. Sorry, not to our people. Want to put it up? Borough law.
Yeah, so I.
Any questions you can reach out or any concerns or anything you can. After month of data, what I was gonna do was ask if somebody could take a picture, so put pictures. And actually for my conversation with Dana, we're one of the first boroughs of township to actually have a proclamation for the. And bullying is. And all aspects. Outlines.
Still a little. Observation. It's your. Make it sound and clear. It lost to a rocky story. All right, breast cancer awareness month. Where's October twenty twenty five, more than thirty years, the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women about early breast cancer detection. And where it's the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer by collaborating with several national public service organizations. For professional associations and government agencies who work together to ensure that the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month message. Is heard by thousands of women and their families. And where the American Cancer Society estimates that in the United States, more than three hundred and thirty nine thousand two hundred fifty new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women this year. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates that in the United States, more than two thousand one hundred and ninety new cases. When basic breast cancer will be diagnosed in men this year. Whereas through research and advocacy, sufficient significant advances have been made. The fight against breast cancer, including significant decreases in mortality. And whereas the two point nine million breast cancer survivors living in the United States today are testament to courage. As well as the importance of promoting awareness about breast cancer. Providing information, funding research, following recommend then recommended screenings. Guidelines and offering treatment to those who are affected. Now therefore, I'm meant to finish my the Borough South Plainfield do proclaim October twenty twenty five as breast cancer awareness month in the borough. And ask all citizens to join in this worthwhile cause to celebrate successes and memorialize lost battles. And we have some folks accepting the breast cancer awareness month proclamation, right? No, we do not.
Melanie and I can.
Nina Galley's order to everybody around. And it's also domestic violence awareness month, and whereas violence against women, children and men continues to become more prevalent. As a social problem in our society and where a problem to domestic violence are not confined to any group. Or groups of people, but across all economic, racial and societal barriers and are supported by societal indifference. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates the individual's privacy, dignity, security and humility. Due to systematic use of physical, emotional, verbal, sexual, psychological and economic control and or abuse. With the impact of this crime being wide ranging. And whereas with leadership, dedication and encouragement, there's compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing domestic and sexual violence in Middlesex County. We prevent your education focused on increasing gender equality and bystander intervention. Increased awareness and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And where it's throughout the month of October, we strongly support the efforts of the national, state and local partners. And have every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what domestic and sexual violence is. How to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services. And how every segment in ours of our society can work together to better address domestic and sexual violence. Now, therefore, I'm at the finishment of the Borough South Plainfield to hereby proclaim October twenty twenty five as domestic violence awareness month. In the Borough of South Plainfield, encourage everyone to join anti-domestic and sexual violence advocates. And support service programs in the belief that community members can be a part of the solution to end such violence. Okay.
Thank you, everyone, Jane left Wednesday, it was wonderful and she's a wonderful representation of our department. There and that was.
Very happy to be there.
Very nice, she's been all there. And you to everyone, we had a walk last week at Hudson Park and it was very good. We had um Lauren Domancik's family attend, Lauren is Dr. Lauren Domancik, mom and dad. Uh were born and raised in South Plainfield. They um they attended last week and we would also like to have a silent witness. In the near future to represent her as well, because even though she was kind of in county. You know, she has some South Plainfield in her.
Would you please um just let the public know where people can go to volunteer?
Oh, sure, if anyone is interested in volunteering for the South Plainfield team. We have applications that you can just call the main number at the police department is seven five five oh seven hundred. And dispatch will get in touch with one of us to contact you and let and send you either email or snail mail. An application to join the team. Thank you.
That. Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Now, I have some confirmation for National Bullying Month.
Yes.
I can do that, right? Right, thank you.
You're welcome. For final adoption ordinance. Seven zero.
Sorry, a couple ordinance authorizing various capital improvements to Monument Park, including recircus walking path. Pavers and monuments at the cost of forty five thousand dollars in the Borough of South Plainfield, County of Melsec, State of New Jersey.
Thank you, can I get a motion for final adoption on ordinance twenty three, so. Motion by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Ben Javanga. And this for final adoption, we'll open it up for public comments regarding ordinance twenty three seven zero. None of the public portion, counsel comments. Ms. Antoni, can you call the roll?
Councilman Ben Javanga.
Yes.
Fuffini, Councilwoman. Yeah. Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yeah.
And then white.
Yes.
That's a six zero.
Thank you also for final adoption, ordinance twenty three seventy one.
Ordinance amending chapter one sixty three, article one, title low speed electric vehicles of the code of the Borough of South Plainfield.
Thank you, I'm getting motion for final adoption on ordinance twenty three seventy one, so moves. Motion by Councilman Smith, second by Councilwoman Mont. Better for Stevie. And this is for final adoption, open up for public comments regarding ordinance twenty three seventy one. Portion counsel comments.
Yes, mayor, I'd like to just make a tiny minor change. Um just for clarification, on the back. One six three dash four. That we that operation of motorized electric vehicles. Um that pertains to class three. Motorized electric vehicles. Not below the electric vehicles, I would just like to insert um operation of. A class three. Motorized electric vehicle.
Councilman, were you looking to amend this ordinance so we would have to have another public hearing on it?
Oh, I thought we could amend it now.
Yeah. If you get a men, that's a substantial change, we would have to have a third public hearing.
I don't think that's a substantial. Just to, just to clarify that it's a class three, I think.
Okay.
So we just changed to say class three, more. Motorized electric vehicles in the three sections.
Okay.
Action, I think that's a de minimis.
Okay. I'll make the most to uh. Accept amendment or. Amendment, the amendment ordinance to include that comment.
There you go, motion from Melon by Councilman Ben Javanga, second by Council President White, all in favor of amendment? Anyone opposed? Okay. So it does mention Paul class three and one section of it already, right?
It it references class three motorized electric vehicle in every other.
Yeah.
Except for.
Okay.
That's why I think it's, it's clearly intended to be class three and that's why I think it's a de minimis change.
There it is. Alright, so we have a motion of the second, any other counsel comments? Okay, Ms. Antoni, can you pull the roll on the amended ordinance twenty three seventy?
Councilman Ben Javanga.
Yes.
I'm a Puffini, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock. And then white, that's a six zero.
Thank you for introduction ordinance twenty three seventy two.
An ordinance amending chapter one eighty seven of the code of the Borough of South Plainfield titled Vehicles and Traffic.
Thank you, can I get a motion for introduction on ordinance twenty three seventy two? Motion by Councilman Wallach, second by Councilman Smith, Ms. Antoni, can you call the roll?
And Ben Javanga.
Yes.
Woman Fuffini, Councilwoman Mont, Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock. President White, that's a six zero.
Thank you, also for introduction ordinance twenty three seventy three.
Couple ordinance authorizing various capital improvements to the South Plainfield Senior Center's kitchen. How they cost up a hundred fifty thousand dollars in police equipment and computers tolling twenty five thousand dollars in the Borough of South Plainfield. County of Melsec, State of New Jersey.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for introduction on ordinance twenty three seventy three?
So.
Motion by Council President White, seconded by Councilwoman Fostini. Ms. Antoni, can you call the role?
Councilman Benjavanga.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ma.
Yeah.
Miss, Councilwoman Willak.
Yes.
Council President White. That's a six zero.
Thank you. Call it for introduction ordinance twenty three seventy four.
And ordinance approving an amended master license agreement with New York S M S A Limited Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for introduction on ordinance twenty three seventy four?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Benjavanga, second by Council President White. Ms. Antoni, can you call the role?
Councilman Benjavanga.
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Fostini. Or the not. That's for this.
Yes.
Council President White. That's a six zero.
Thank you. The public hearing for ordinance is twenty three seventy two through twenty three seventy four will be held on October. Twenty twenty. Twenty at seven P M. Can I get a motion for resolutions twenty five dash three twenty seven through twenty five dash three thirty eight?
Motion second.
By Councilman Willak, second by Councilman Benjavanga. Ms. Antoni, can you call the role?
Councilman Benjavanga.
Yes.
Fostini, Councilwoman Ma. Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Willak.
Yeah.
Council President White.
Yes.
That's a six zero.
And here at one item corresponds health advisory board monthly report for September. Can I get a motion on the payment of bills for seven million one hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and fifty four dollars and seventy seven?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Benjavanga, second by Councilwoman Ma. Ms. Antoni, can you call the role?
Councilman Benjavanga.
Yes.
And Fostini, Councilwoman.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Willak. Council President White.
You can get a motion for executive session twenty five dash three thirty nine as amended.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Benjavanga, second by Councilwoman Ma. Miss.
Yes.
Fostini, get it right one day. Ms. Antoni, can you call the role?
Councilman Benjavanga.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Fostini.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Ma. Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Willak.
Yes.
Council President White.
Yeah.
That's a six zero.
Thank you. Ms. Antoni, is anything else for us to make?
Uh, just a reminder that November fourth, which is hard to believe this year went down. That's November fourth is a general election and all polls will be open from six A M to eight P M. I have Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen.
Uh, yes, Mayor. To, to talk about the polls being open, Amy did approach me today about the senior center, because as I think everyone can see, there's a lot of site work going on. And we expect it all to be done before the end of the month and before election day. The bigger question I think everybody's really been asking about is kind of the status of Oak Tree Avenue. And we expect Oak Tree Avenue to be. Have its milling and resurfacing somewhere around. October twenty second, twenty third. So the week of the twentieth. Um, once again, that road should be passable. And I know that's very difficult for a lot of the residents there. Uh, tomorrow, uh, we're going to, we're going to start receiving, um, they're going to be mobilizing. And we're going to start receiving deliveries for the new roof here from Minnesota building. So I know. Um, I'm here twenty three years and when I first came here, the new foot, the roof wasn't new. And I don't even think it was twenty three years old then. I think it was even older. So I think everyone's could be happy to see that done. We anticipate having a resolution on for the next meeting to also do Kyler. So. Once Tyler places done, I think a lot of the major roads that have really been very problematic. Should be solved. And I want to congratulate Sarah, who's transferred from the police department. Sorry, chief, but we're really looking forward to having Sarah in our department. And with that, progress.
Thank you. With that, chief.
Um, just a few things, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have our bike with you event called the Spring Lake Park on October twenty sixth. That's for students in grades two to six. From ten A M to one P M. Um, anyone can register their children on our Facebook, there's a link. Um, and with that, you know, we're going to be launching more of an education campaign with in coordination with the schools. For bike safety and e-bike safety. And I just want to thank the mayor council for. Ordinance twenty three seventy one, that was for e-bikes. I know a lot of work was put into that and I certainly appreciate it. Um, also. Ordinance, uh, resolution twenty five three thirty five that adopts the rules and regulations offered to the police department. That's a big milestone. In our step towards police accreditation. So I appreciate that as well. Um, and I am sad to see Sarah go, but do wish her best of luck just down the hallway.
Career growth. Okay. Counselor?
Made my voice their executives.
Joy. Councilman Smith.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank, uh. Council for. Keeping resolution twenty five three twenty eight, allowing Christina and Racket to submit the application for recycling. She's doing a phenomenal job with the recycling grants. And enhancement and the hiring of, uh, Kate and Brian. Could be groundskeepers in the grounds for the recycling center. Um, the E A C and the green team have worked hand in hand to, uh. Make our borough beautiful and I'd like to commend them for everything they've done. And to keep that and 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 working towards that. So thank you to all of them. And I know that, uh, I think it was, uh. September, he did the Christmas. Uh, David will probably talk about that a little bit, but they they had flyers and handouts and anything for all the residents. About what they can do. And I know we have the cleanup coming up, so we all would be there for the fall cleanup as well. That project.
Excellent. Uh, Councilwoman Ma.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
You, Councilwoman Fostini.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, um, we are once again having a public celebration. Uh, hosting the annual trumper treat event. Uh, this year it is in a new location. Um, it will be behind Willow Park, the library and Borough Hall. On Saturday, November third, um, from twelve forty five to four P M. Twelve forty five will be the seventh time, uh, sign up. Um. And registration will open for that on Saturday, October twenty fifth. And at this time, we have a candy donation, little monster set up at Borough Hall, the library and at the school center. If anyone would like to help out, we give some candy donation. Uh, additionally, let me slip this week, um. I know travel basketball trials are continuing. Um, if anyone would like to help on. Uh, Mondays at six P M, we're still looking for volunteers for that. And, uh, regular basketball rec and wrestling registration is now open. And with that progress.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to congratulate Councilwoman Fostini and our daughter being married the other day. It was a great event and, uh. Congratulations. Happy birthday to all the October birthdays.
Yes.
Councilman Willak.
Uh, just to add a little thought, uh, there said that the bullying, uh. Proclamation first, one of the first. Then a borough has had. So I'm glad to hear that we are. You know, on top of the list there. And I'm glad, I'm glad that we're putting this on. This is an important thing. There's a lot of. You know, people that get bullied and it can affect their lives in many different ways, young, old, middle aged, whatever. So they really get to have that out there. That's what you want to say, Tom.
Yeah, I just want to let everybody know that I've been working with. And, um. A lot of effort into this and I'm really appreciate. And I thank Amy for her help with this and I thank Mayor and and Councilman White, but. I'm glad that this is. It was the last. Confirmation.
With that progress.
Thank you. And no, I just said, I'm, I'm finished with that. Thank you.
And just to give the schools credit, so they they do, you know, significant anti-bullying education schools as well, so. No, I I understand that their focus is on schoolchildren, which it could be. And that's why I think this is, this is a nice addition to that, but at least our schools are are doing the right thing and putting that in part of their curriculum with. Various, um, assemblies and things that go on to kind of start that at an early age, right?
Okay, but thank you again.
It's just when we get out of those schools, we got to remember what we learned. Right, Councilman?
Yes, sir.
And one of the things that Dana has mentioned. He said that. What's for bullying is all bullying because an adult should know that.
Yeah, I don't know. It's hard to say which which one's worse. It's pretty bad as a as a school child as well, I would imagine, but. Nothing is good and so. For what it's worth, hopefully we can spread some some more. Awareness. Uh, Councilman Benjamin.
Yes, Mayor. Um, just. Want to get the council's input because November seems to be a crazy time of the year with holidays and and. Well, it's most holiday in in the year with with, uh. Veterans Day and Thanksgiving, and then we have the League of Municipalities. So when we struck our calendar at the beginning of the year, we had the third and the seventeenth as a meeting. The third is the night before election day, which typically we we wouldn't schedule it that day because our clerk has to get up before. Back in the morning or earlier, three. Um, and the seventeen falls that during the League of Municipalities. So what I would recommend is, um, canceling both the third and the seventeenth meeting and having one on the tenth. Okay, and then the next one will fall on December first. I I've talked into, uh. Glenn and Amy about that. They, there's no issue with the timing or anything. So we didn't have one meeting in November and that will be on the on the tenth.
And then for every, we needed, we could always add a special meeting.
We could if we need to, but this at first is.
We'll be right here. It's not that far. Like, council comments on on that?
I'm gonna put it here.
All right, what do we need to do?
Just like that, I guess. We need, we don't need to vote, just to consensus.
Your council meeting will for month of November.
The tenth.
Will be on November tenth.
You will notice canceling the the third.
This advertised for the November tenth.
Just obviously update.
The third and.
Calendars and whatever else. Or else we might.
Meeting for Mr. Rizzo.
Right.
Oh.
You're getting closer and closer to retirement.
So and with that progress.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Council President White.
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor. Progress this week.
Councilman White. Just kidding. Sure. All right, we are going into executive session. We have for expecting any items.
Yeah, I, no, I, I think I may wait.
Yeah, it's been a couple hours.
Maybe more.